Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference, Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. We have one item on the agenda, that is, discussion regarding requests for proposal submittals for the proposed programs to be operated out of the current Senior Citizen Center and Reeves Center. Obviously, Boys and Girls Club is up first.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members and mayor. My name is Veronica Tracy. I'm the Recreation Manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm really glad to be here tonight to tell you about two exciting requests for proposals we are working on for operations of parks facilities. Obviously, as the mayor described, the Senior Center currently on 329 South Peters and also the Reeves Park Garden or Teen Center, depending on how long you've been here in Norman. We put out two requests for proposals in June for both facilities. For the Reeves Park Garden Center or Teen Center, we received one proposal, and that was from CCFI, the Center for Children and Families, with their proposal to bring a teen center. Wonderful, awesome opportunity to put the Reeves Park Center back to its original use. We are glad to tell you about that tonight, and then later on, we'll tell you about the proposal we received for 329 South Peters. The Mary Abbott House will talk about that. Keep in mind that we are currently negotiating contracts. The City Attorney's Office is working on two contracts for the operations of that, so we can talk about any questions you might have about that as we're undergoing negotiations. But I'd love to introduce Melissa Klink from CCFI.
Thank you. So I am excited to be here tonight. Whitney Dunn is our Boys and Girls Club Executive Director, and she's right here behind me, and will hop in as needed. So we were thrilled to have this opportunity. Boys and Girls Club of Norman is a program of Center for Children and Families, so our mission at CCFI is to heal children, empower youth, and strengthen families, because every child deserves to grow up safe, nurtured, and loved. And if you've been to our building, you know it's a bright, happy place, but we deal with a lot of hard things there. We are your local Family Resource Center, so we are the Family Resource Center for Cleveland County and beyond, one of only three in the state. And what that means is we serve families where they're at with whatever they need and help connect them to other vital resources in the community. We do that in counseling services, we do that in our strengthening families program, which is prevention and education. We do that through our baby pantry, where we distribute diapers and wipes, and then, of course, in our Boys and Girls Club. So our club is unique in that it is the only club in the state that's operated within another agency. So Boys and Girls Club is a program of CCFI, and that doesn't happen very often. And when we're talking to people at Boys and Girls Club of America, they say, "We wish every community could have a Boys and Girls Club like this," just because those resources are available that we offer at CCFI to all of our kiddos in the club as well. So this is the mission of the club, is to provide all young people, especially Norman's most vulnerable, with a healthy environment in which they can be empowered to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And so, we do that kind of through five different areas of programming: education, health and wellness, sports, recreation, and fitness, leadership and service, and the arts. Again, if you've been to our club, it is a happy place. Last year, we served 110 kiddos at our main site, which is at 210 South Cockrell, tucked right back in that neighborhood, kind of down Y-Follow there on the east side. And then, we also expanded this past year to Irving Middle School. We started last school year at Irving with five members. We ended the school year with 66 kids. And so, that's a huge success. And that was after talking to Norman Public Schools, and we asked, "Where do you need us?" And they said, "Irving." And so, that's where we went. And we had kids there who came to us at the beginning of the school year with, or when they came to us in the middle of the school year, they had 9% in classes, 8% in classes, and they hadn't turned in work in months. And their teachers brought them to us and said, "They need to be eligible to play sports, they need to pass this class, what can you do?" And we had these kids passing with Bs and Cs, which is great, like maybe some As thrown in there. But more importantly, they gained their confidence back. 95% of those kids at Irving Middle School last year were from single-parent households. And so, a lot of them were going home at night, and they didn't have dinner, or they didn't have a parent at home because their parent was working. And so, we provide a snack every day after school and a hot dinner, both at our main site and at Irving. So we also have some kids at Irving right now who are members of the football team, and they come to us after practice just to eat. And then they go home. And that's totally okay. So we are the club for the kids that need us. So, kind of that success last year in the middle school program really brought us to wonder, like, what can we do more? Like, and Boys and Girls Club of America has this huge push right now for teen programming, and they're seeing this drop off in teen programming after the pandemic and through the pandemic. We're actually seeing the opposite of that here at Boys and Girls Club of Norman. So this year for summer camp, we enrolled 79 summer campers. 34% of them are teens. Teens don't need to go to summer camp. They don't need to be somewhere from eight to five while their parents at work. They could easily be at home, playing video games, sitting on their phone, watching TikTok all day, but they chose to come to summer camp. And so, I think that speaks volumes to the kind of services we're offering, that it was a place where teens chose to be this summer. So there's just some pictures from our club. Those are real kiddos. One of the activities down there on the bottom is our friends at Pino's Palette partnered with us this summer to do art classes for our teens. So that was kind of our focus this summer camp this year for teens. Again, it's a tough age group to work with. So they came to the club one day, we went to Pino's Palette three of the days. Owner John is a great friend of our club. We have a STEM lab at our main site. You know, of course, they're playing outside on the playground. We feed them ice cream sometimes, but they do get a healthy meal every day, we promise. And so, just some of those things. I'm going to show just a real quick video to you, just a story from the club before we go on. Okay, we'll come back to it. Ah, there we go. Thank you.
Roxanne is a second grader with a huge personality. Although she's faced many obstacles that no other child should face in their first seven years of life, she maintains a cheerful and positive demeanor. Roxanne's family often struggles with food insecurity and homelessness. However, Roxanne knows she has a snack waiting for her every day when she comes into the Boys and Girls Club, along with a hot meal before she heads home for the night. Sometimes, after a long day at school, Roxanne naps on a couch in the integrity room, a space designed for when kids just need a break. Complex trauma often presents behaviors, which is demonstrated in Roxanne on a regular basis. Staff have learned the signs for when Roxanne is becoming dysregulated and has worked with her so she knows when it's time to step in the integrity room for a break. Roxanne is truly at home at the Boys and Girls Club of Norman. She's thriving academically in school, prides herself on leadership skills, experiences safety, and forms a connection with other members, staff, and volunteers. Even when external factors are uncertain, Roxanne can always be herself in the club.
So that's just one story of the kiddos that we serve, but they're pretty special, and we really rely heavily on our community partnerships. One pretty cool thing right now...
Hi, I'm Melissa Klink.
Nope. Nope, we're not watching that one. But one thing that is pretty cool about our club is that we thrive on these partnerships that we have. So, we currently are serving seven members in the club who live at Food and Shelter in the tiny homes, and we created a spot for every kid that's school-aged who lives at Food and Shelter if they need a spot at the Boys and Girls Club. We work closely with our counseling department, so about 40% of our kids in the club also receive counseling services at our agency, which is pretty unique. So, we will continue here. So, moving on to Reeves Park. So, kind of what we've seen, we're ab space at our club, and we were only serving 60 kids during the pandemic. We served 177, or 191 last year. So, a lot of kids. We've increased quite a bit, and we're at capacity. So, we have our main site, we can enroll about 110 before we're capped. It's a small, small space. So, what this building at Reeves Park would allow us to do is move 40 of our middle schoolers over to that facility, creating 40 new spots at our main site, which we need. And we would start with Whittier and Alcott. Those are two schools that currently best to us, and then be able to serve high school students as well. So currently, we do have some enrolled high school members, but we kind of lose them when they get to high school. We don't have transportation from the high schools, and it's a grant that we have right now that's actually allowing us to purchase a van, so we can transport from the high schools. But really keeping that engagement, so we can really focus on career development and leadership, and focusing on getting them through graduation. And there's a lot of really amazing scholarship opportunities through Boys and Girls Club of America, and we just don't have juniors and seniors in high school to help take advantage of some of that. So, really being able to give them their own space is crucial to that, because you come to our main space, it's beautiful, it's colorful, but there's six-year-olds there. And a 17-year-old doesn't want to be with their six-year-old siblings, they want their own space. So we would kind of use our current club members to be in the space siblings, and then really we rely on school and other social service agency referrals, and then we have a lot of parents call as well. We would do our regular programming at this new site, focusing on teen curriculum that's offered by Boys and Girls Club of America, serve snack and dinner daily, and we get that through our partnership with the Regional Food Bank. And it would be Monday through Friday after school until 7:00 p.m., which is our regular hours now. And we also would love the opportunity to host some weekend and evening events, you know, like a Friday fun night once a month, something like that, to just continue to engage more members. We have a group right now that's interested in putting a teaching kitchen into this facility, which is pretty cool. It has two, if you haven't been in the building, it's kind of like two flexible multipurpose rooms, and then there's like a smaller, what I'm calling the classroom area, which we could use for tutoring, homework help. We do counseling groups, social-emotional groups for teens. And then, a dream would be to build like a separate building, multipurpose building for a gym, which would allow us to increase capacity, because really, it's about 40 teens is max over there right now. And so, why Reeves Park? Well, it allows to expand capacity, serve 40 more kids every year, which is amazing, and it would really give the teens their own space to own. Of course, it's a perfect location, so close to OU. We can just envision walking over to basketball games with the kids, or using the pool at OU, you can walk right over there. Just some of those collaboration opportunities that we'd have, being that close. And teens in our community need Boys and Girls Club. So, we did a community needs assessment in December of this past year, and 51% of the parents that responded said that the largest priority in social supports in Norman right now is access to safe spaces for teens. So this would help provide and fill that gap. And so, kind of why CCFI in general? We have that Family Resource Center model, so we're able to connect families with other social services. We can provide those mental health supports in an after-school program, which is just so de-stigmatizing. We have proven outcomes, and we utilize the HOPE framework. And something that's kind of unique is, we provide a space for kids that wouldn't be successful in other programs. So, right now, over at Irving, we have an eighth grader, and he is on the autism spectrum, and he's actually been with us since he was a baby. His mom had him in our Bringing Up Babies program, which is our in-home visitation services, and that's when they first found out through a developmental screening that he should be referred for further screening as a toddler, which led to his early diagnosis, and he was able to kind of connect with those supports early. And he's never been in an after-school program, he's 13 now. They just never found a program that would take him, that he'd thrive in, and he loves the club. He does well, he's there every day, and he's in special education classes during the day, and after school he comes, and he has friends at the club, and he just, he absolutely loves it. And so, we kind of tailor our model to be there for every kid. We are a safety net program, so we're there for the kids that need us the most. And we've had some recent expansion in the club that's gone well, of course, at Irving. We get support through Boys and Girls Club of America. We have strong community partners in the club, and our teen engagement has been really high this past year, so just keeping that going. And so, this is our dream, is to have the centrally-located facility for at-risk teens, where they can build hope for their future, receive those resources, whether it's mental health, food, homework help, things that they immediately need, so they can become kind and caring adults. They can explore careers in higher education, they can receive that mental health and prevention services, spark their creativity, have healthy lifestyle curriculum through fitness and cooking, and form positive peer and adult relationships, and of course, do community service projects as well. And so, I will open it up to any questions.
Where are you going to build this kitchen down? I used to teach in it. How are you going to do that?
Yeah, it's, there's that kitchen there, and so, just kind of retro, yeah, retrofitting it, and there's, they're talking about putting like one long island kind of in the center for a station for...
Another sink, like a prep sink, and then regular sink, and just really big prep areas for the kids, and utensils that the teens can use, and things like that.
How cool is that?
Yeah, really cool. And of course, opening it up for rentals on the weekends, too. We'd be able to operate that, and that would help generate some revenue. If you're familiar with our model, you know, we only charge $20 per school year right now, so it's affordable and accessible for every family. And so, helping generate some of that revenue on the weekends for rentals would be really beneficial for operating the program.
Yes, sir.
I might have asked Jason to talk about the Reeves Center and its current condition, if there's anything we might need to do to it upgrades-wise, and what future plans for it might be.
Well, that's a, it's a good question, so...
Like a gymnasium or something.
The Reeves building is not in the greatest shape. The building hasn't been used in probably at least a decade. I'm trying to remember, I've been here for 20 years, and Mayor might remember this, but we had a dance center out there, and for a full-time employee, the bus station out there, at some period, she got laid off, and so we disclosed the dance center. Wasn't a whole lot of revenue produced in that area. Since then, we have tried to upgrade it into a little bit better of a rental area. We ran summer camps out there in the past, but I would say for the most part, for the past five years, it gets used a couple times a year for July 4th or Needable Fair. Most recently, Flinco used it as a construction trailer. But, yeah, it needs some help, and definitely needs a user, somebody in there every day to take care of it, and we're going full circle back to, if you go back in there and walk on the wall, they have a plaque in there that, mid-'70s when this building was built, in the City of Norman Teen Center. We're going full circle, so I think that's really great. I think the future of anything out there, it's all possible. I mean, we can go out there and try to figure out a concept out there at some point or another. I guess we need to, if Boys and Girls Club's going to be our future user, we need to find out, get input from them, how they want to use that building.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm definitely, I appreciate that, Jason. I'm definitely in favor of this use, I think. I've used the building for ward meetings before, and it looks like the 1970s in there. And so, I'd be interested in making improvements to it as well, if it makes it more usable and friendly as well. And then, figuring out, I agree with Jason about, you know, figuring out plans down the road about what would work best there in that location, or maybe some other location.
It's a great location, you figure inside town.
Yeah, a lot going on in that area, so a lot more going to be going on in that area.
It's almost two miles exactly from every middle school, too, so if we are able to expand it and get all of our middle schoolers there in the future, like, it's perfect. It's like equidistant from all the middle schools, so.
I might add for a minute, too, if everybody goes back about three or four years ago, it was the site for Senior Center. So it does have the potential to be expanded if that ever becomes a wish of our community.
I think another really important point for the Parks Department is that our after-school and summer camp programs are all geared for school-aged children. So this really does meet a need to serve teens that the Parks Department has been aiming to serve for some time. We'd be really excited to serve this population.
Catherine, I'm sure.
So my questions are kind of related to, I guess, the contract, and what is, so, we would remain owner of the building, and then they would operate out of the facility, kind of like what we've done with some of our other contracts.
Yeah, we have a lot of facilities like that, where we've done that with a, you know, dollar-a-year type rent, or maybe they pay electric bills, things like that. I'm thinking of Sooner Theater, or the Arx Arts, the Depot, things, for things that are providing a community benefit, nonprofits, we have done that.
So, yeah, I guess my question is like digging into the details of the contract, like what would the, are we paying utilities? Is the occupant paying utilities, or like upkeep and maintenance, and kind of thinking about, I mean, obviously, we would maintain it if it were our building, but like, just kind of maybe giving us some information on how those current contracts work with like Sooner Theater that we own, and like, what are our obligations as a city to continue to maintain and upkeep through the Parks Department?
Certainly, we want to maintain our buildings for long term. They're ours forever, so...
Yeah.
And we do that with our other facilities. We, I think we have most of our groups now paying their own electric bills. There was a time when that wasn't the case, we eased them into that. But we replace roofs, we do those big capital maintenance items, historically on the structure, so we, the specific details of the contract, I haven't actually worked on it, Heather has, so I don't, I haven't seen that yet, but they're still working on those.
Okay.
So kind of a broad overview is, the Boys and Girls Club would be responsible for the utilities and any minor repairs or normal maintenance from the interior. And then, the outside mowing and landscaping would be the responsibility of the city, except for Boys and Girls Club has indicated, because again, the location is great, but it's also near busy roads, so there's an interest in closing part of that area. They would be responsible for the maintenance, mowing, and landscape within any enclosure that they put up. And then, the kitchen renovations, that would be the responsibility of the Boys and Girls Club, but then that would become the property of the city should, you know, there'd be a partying place. So anything that's a fixture would remain in the building. And again, as Catherine mentioned, you know, if there's like roofing, or a wall needs to be repaired, the city would do that. But then, if there are structural changes, or like walls that is wanting to be put up, that would be the responsibility of the tenant to kind of do the build-out that they're interested in having. I don't know if that answers your suggestion.
Yes. Yeah, no, that was, that was great. Thank you.
That's also based on the approval of Boys and Girls Club, because that's the draft we set, but we haven't, you know, waited to hear back. But it's based on their general core, that's a pretty interesting.
Yeah, no, it's just good to get an overall understanding of kind of what that relationship is going to look like, and kind of what is your responsibility, what is ours, as it is, you know, a city-owned building. I think that, I mean, obviously, the services that you provide are invaluable to our community and to the families that you serve. So, I mean, I think that it's a, it's a great use. Obviously, like Jason said, we're coming full circle with the use of the building, and so, it was also helpful, Heather, to hear kind of if they wanted to do expansions and some different things that, like how that partnership and relationship would go. So I think this is a great, a great use of the space.
Catherine, I'm sure.
Forgive me if I missed it, but did you have a timeline, like if approved?
So it really is depending on the kind of condition of the building, so, and there's some safety things we have to do in order to actually operate out of it. So, there's some bathroom requirements by Boys and Girls Club of America that we have to do, and install our key card locks and that kind of thing. So, I mean, maybe next school year would be like kind of the dream, but it really just depends on how much work actually needs to be done inside, so.
By next fall, hopefully?
Hopefully, we'll see. And we're a nonprofit, so funding's always fun to come around, too, so, you know.
Just any, that outward expansion or getting off an area, you know, Anne Marie's going to be concerned about that, so, of the medieval fair, any alteration of the footprint, so, as long as I guess we're working with her on that.
And also with Lade, who, again, for the medieval fair and other, he was concerned that the fencing not enclosed the electrical box. So, yeah, Boys and Girls Club has been really good looking at the city, Mr. Holman, on what our needs will be in regards to that building, for instance. They have to clear out for the July 4th, so there's sort of a safe, air-conditioned station for the city employees involved in that event, and they've been very gracious to work with the city to allow access for those events.
Okay, thank you.
One more question about, so, as the timeline progresses forward for you to kind of move some of the operations into the space, what does that look like for your staffing? Like, is, do you have to staff up? Like, what is, what is that going to look like?
Yeah. So, we have a cost reimbursement grant right now through the Department of Education that's really allowed us to expand this past year. We do have some, we have two private funders that are specifically interested in a standalone teen center. So, of course, it's like, oh, you have to have the program before you get funding, so, like, it's just, you know, the nonprofit delicate balance there of trying to figure out what that looks like, but we would dedicate specific staff to the site. And so, I think we put it in the proposal, but I believe it's, is it five WEPs and a site coordinator?
Yeah, so like two through, show one to 10.
Yeah. So, so five youth development professionals, and then a site coordinator for the site, and the site coordinator would help manage, you know, facility rentals and that kind of thing as well. So, they would kind of own this site as their own. I think we determine costs would be about a $300,000 a year, yeah, approximately $300,000 a year for us to operate this with fidelity, the way that we'd like to.
Well, thank you, Melissa.
Of course.
I guess now we move to Abbott House?
Yes. So, I discussed that the Parks Department released two RFPs in June, the second one being, thank you, Melissa, an RFP for 329 South Peters, the current Senior Center that the city utilizes. Now, of course, this building will not be available for operations until we open the new Adult Wellness and Education Center on Finley and move in there. We received two proposals for this request, and the committee interviewed and reviewed the RFPs and selected the Mary Abbott House to operate potentially 329 South Peters. So we have been working on a contract in a very similar framework as the Reeves Building for at the Abbott House. So I'd love to introduce, this is Andre Harper, the Executive Director of Abbott House, and her staff, to talk to you about their potential operations for 329 South Peters.
So I'm Andre Harper, I'm the Executive Director at Abbott House Child Advocacy Center in Ollett.
I'm Kristy Cornet, I'm the Program Director at the Abbott House.
And I'm Ronnie Roney, I'm the Education Director at Abbott House, and this is Elle, one of our therapy dogs at Abbott House.
And I think we're keeping Elle, so she's staying with us.
She would love to hang out, so.
So, this is Abbott House, for those of you who aren't familiar with our building. We've been in the Norman community since 1996. We actually started over on the University of Oklahoma campus in a borrowed space with a part-time staff of one, and then we, oh, sorry, you're good. And then we, oh, sorry, you're good. And then we moved to 231 South Sims in 2008. And we've added on to that space. It's now a 7,500 square foot building. And we have a staff of 10, and then three part-time staff as well. And we've just simply outgrown this space. And so when we heard about the Senior Citizens Center, it's in very close proximity to us. And so we are excited for the possibility to expand into that space. So our mission is preventing abuse, advocating for children, and fostering hope and healing. And we do this through four main program areas, and that's forensic interviewing, family advocacy, and medical, and education. And so this is a picture depicting what a child advocacy center does for the child. This is without CACs, the child might end up talking to eight to 10 different adult strangers throughout the course of a child abuse investigation. And so with this CAC model, everything is centered around the child, and all of those agencies come together at our center to determine the next best steps for a child throughout the course of the investigation. And so one of the big things we're wanting to do with the Senior Citizens Center, or 329 South Peters, I need to stop calling it that, is move our Internet Crimes Against Children Unit down into the basement space of that center. And we've had this initiative for the last two years. Child exploitation has increased dramatically. And so we have written grants through the National Children's Alliance, and we receive $75,000 each year. And that funding goes to pay for resources and training for all of our local law enforcement agencies. And right now, they're in a seven-by-15 old closet at Abbott House, sharing that space. So as you can imagine, they're pretty, pretty crowded in there. And so they are excited about the possibility of, of moving over there and taking over that space and being able to bring in more detectives and working more cases, so.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about our education expansion, since that's what I do at Abbott House as the Education Director. Currently, right now, we do some prevention education, so we teach a, a, sorry, I'm like making sure she's not going crazy. We teach Safety in Action, which is basically teaching child-serving organizations how to recognize, respond, and report child abuse. And that's a free program we give. We have Keeping Them Safe, which is teaching like about eight potentially risky behaviors of adult predators. And then Alert, I have the shirt on. I went to a school today to teach Alert. And that is Avoid, Learn, React, Tell, teaching kids how to keep themselves safe online, like Andre just talked about with the Internet Crimes Against Children Unit. Cyber tips are up, online exploitation, sextortion, financial sextortion, all of that is on a rise. And so we've developed a program at Abbott House to bring it to the schools, bring it to kids. And then we also have a parent program that we teach parents kind of what to look out for and how to keep their kids safe online as well. So with the new space, we will be able to expand a little bit more education. Right now, it's just me. And so hopefully, we'll be able to have, I'll be able to have a few partners. And we're wanting to do some more community education. So you see on here, parent support groups, child survivor support groups. We do have some community organizations that do those as well. And just simply, there's just not enough in our area that, for the amount of people that need them. And honestly, like, the kids that come through Abbott House, they, even though it's not super fun while they're there, because they have to talk about, you know, the awful thing that's happened to them, a lot of times, they don't wanna leave, because they end up loving it. They meet Elle or Phoebe, you know, they're like, okay, where's my room? I'll move in. And so it's, I, we are just really excited about the opportunity of getting to say, you get to come back, you know? And it'll just be right across the parking lot, and you're gonna come back, and we're gonna have, you know, group time together, and just more of that, like, truly helping them heal through those support groups. Mental health, like, we partner with CCFI with mental health and refer a lot of our kids to them as well. But we'll be able to kind of keep some of the just groups, not, we won't have LPCs or anything like that yet, but Christie, we'll talk to you about that in a minute. Also, this gives us a huge space upstairs. If you've been to 329 South Peters, the upstairs is quite open. And that's gonna allow us to have a training center. And that's been, I think, all three of our dreams for a few years now, of really being able to provide our community. We serve Cleveland, Garvin, and McLean Counties, but honestly, Abbott House is one of like 2021 child advocacy centers in the state of Oklahoma. And we, I'm gonna brag on us a little bit, but you can, you could check the records and see. But we feel like we're a pretty good, like, standard when it comes to a child advocacy center in Oklahoma. And our state chapter, Child Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma, it's called CAECO, they look to us honestly a lot for advice on how to help other CACs to develop their people and, and train their people. And so we're like, why not expand upon that and offer trainings with the people that we have at Abbott House as our experts, and offering those trainings to other child advocacy centers and our partners? So we partner with law enforcement, DHS, mental health providers, medical providers, the DA's office. All of those are part of our multidisciplinary team, and we have great experts already at our fingertips. And we'd love to have that opportunity to train even more people how to work child abuse investigations. And then we, it'll help us with the meeting space, because right now, we're in this room. It's kind of a, it's just getting kind of crowded, because it's a good thing. So a lot of our multidisciplinary team members are coming to the meetings. And then it's like, oh, my gosh, we don't have enough chairs for all these people. So between that, case review, and our board meetings, and our staff meetings, we'll be able to do a lot of stuff upstairs for that area.
Just go ahead and go on the education side of things?
Okay. Yeah, so I'm gonna talk about, so with moving over to 329 South Peters, that's gonna open up even more avenues at our current site. Because of the expansion, we get to, like she was talking about, you know, we partner with all these mental health agencies, but we're also looking to bring on mental health providers onsite as well. And so opening up some office space and some space at our, our current location will allow for kids to be seen as, a lot of them as soon as possible. Because of such a need here in the community for mental health, that we're seeing wait times of, you know, six months or more at certain, at different places, and fam, sometimes families can't wait that long. And so us being able to add mental health onsite and be able to partner even better with those agencies, so that way, we can meet those emergent needs then, right then and there. And it does become some of them where it's that one-stop shop. They don't have to go other places. They can come and be seen there. And with adding that onsite mental health provider, it'll allow that person to check in with every single child that comes through Abbott House, and check in the day of and see how they're doing, you know? Are there immediate needs? Do we need to do something within the next day or so? And so that's really gonna open avenues for our families to move through that path of healing. The other thing that it's going to allow is for us to add an additional forensic interviewer. Right now, at Abbott House, we are seeing more kids than we've ever seen before. Last year in 2022, we, we conducted 785 forensic interviews of children within this, within this community and this district, and that's the most we'd ever seen. But we're on target this year to do well over 900. And it's, it's sad, and it's exciting that we have the ability to do that, but it's sad that it's there as well. And so we just wanna be able to expand and see kids sooner, because best practice, and ideally, to see a kid, you wanna see them within 72 hours, because that's the first step in an investigation about abuse and neglect, is having that child's voice be heard and talk about what they've experienced. But if they're having to wait seven, eight-plus days for that, everything's on standby, and this family's in crisis for that long until they can get in there. But adding another interviewer is gonna shorten that amount of time, being able to see kids within 72 hours or less. And so that way, it's getting them started on that path to healing right away. And it also is gonna allow for us to bring in a long-term case manager. Because right now, we have our two-and-a-half advocates who try to do the day-of stuff, as well as all of the follow-up and the continuation. But with 900-plus families that they're seeing, it's just, just hard to do and impossible. So being able to add on a case manager who can also do the follow-up and see that family from the day that they arrive, all the way through, even up and through court investigations if need be. We do partner with the DA's office, with their, and victim witness coordinators, but also just being able to be that bridge, be that gap, be that guide for families as they're dealing with this trauma and this crisis. And just hopefully see them move over and be successful, and to be prosperous, and to know that this isn't the end of it. This is just the beginning, and there's so much more to life after that.
What's your oldest client?
Our oldest client? So we generally serve, for a forensic interview, we serve three up to the age of 18. We also do, frantically interview adults that are developmentally delayed. And as far as like our medical services and advocacy services, medical, we see from birth all the way up. And advocacy not only serves the child themselves, but they also wrap around the families and the adults and make sure they have the services that they need and the support that they need.
Any questions?
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Just your organization obviously has experience taking care of an old historic house. The senior center is our original library, so I would assume that the same care would be taken with it. And I don't know of a better use that we have waiting, so. We haven't discussed.
Personally, I hope they go out of business, because we don't want that to.
Well, exactly.
That's what we say. I keep saying, I don't want a job.
Exactly, yeah. But, you know, as long as it does, and being right next door to you, I think it makes perfect sense.
I guess I'm stuck on kitchens tonight. And how are, how does that?
Yes, I, I wanted to clarify. Great point. We do have, of course, the kitchen and the dining room, the congregate dining room, the aging services cooks, serves, and delivers meals out of. So that space was not part of this RFP. It was made clear that no proposer would get access to that space, and it will be available for aging services to continue to cook and serve out of.
So is it just the original older library building, not the addition?
Has that been cleared for asbestos, from asbestos?
I hope so.
We've done, we've had a renovation down there probably about, about five or six years ago. I would assume that nothing was found.
Just an older building. I don't remember doing that one. Wonderful.
That was in the basement area where we did the renovations.
And if there would have been, that would have been the place to fight.
It would have been, because that was where all that pottery was and stuff, and you don't know what's in that. Clay stuff. Wonderful. Thank you very much, honey.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We're, we're excited about it, and, yeah, we're willing to, to do what we gotta do to make it work, so.
Likewise.
What's the timeline on that, I guess?
Yeah.
So, of course, the Adult Wellness and Education Center is a huge factor in this. We are not going to be moving out or closing our current operation until that opens. We will be doing soft openings at the end of October, leading up to the big grand opening, first week of November. And we hope to begin moving things out of the current senior center in October as well. So we've discussed that the dream is around January, but we're also going to be, for them to move in, for us to move out, do some, you know, minimal work to get it ready for them to move in, and for them to kind of start work and moving it around January. I also think that we will be very flexible about allowing them to come in and do some work that they need to do as soon as our contract is solidified and we are starting to move out.
I would imagine the walls, as I remember them, are pretty white and dreary, and they need.
Yes, yes, sir. They need the Abbott House touch.
We're gonna get some paint. Tell them about that. Oh, go, go ahead.
Okay. We actually, we've partnered with Ideal Homes for United Way of Hearing on Friday. And so they have a crew of 50-plus coming over to do an overhaul on the, on the outside of the building, like, all the landscaping and cleanup, and they're gonna haul everything off. And then they have Kelly Moore coming in to do the painting. And so they've moved all the activities for that day downstairs. We're not gonna go into the basement area. We're just gonna work on that second floor.
How do you beat that?
Those are already starting to happen.
Wonderful. Wonderful to have firms that will do things like that in their assets. All right. Anything else, ladies?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anything else from counsel? All right, we're adjourned for 15 minutes, or 20 minutes.
There we go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of September 12th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Heikala.
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Item one, approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council Study Session Minutes of March 7th, 2023, April 4th, 2023, and May 2nd, 2023. City Council Conference Minutes of May 9th, 2023, and August 17th, 2023. City Council Special Meeting Minutes of May 16th, 2023, and City Council Finance Committee Meeting Minutes of May 23rd, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item number two, proclamations. Just a second, let me get a drink. We've got three of them tonight. A proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the city of Norman as a Purple Heart city. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city proclaiming the city of Norman as a Purple Heart city. Whereas the citizens of the city of Norman have a great and deep gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to the members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat. And whereas the contributions of the men and women from the city of Norman who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the city of Norman appreciates the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients have made the defense of our freedoms and the wishes to acknowledge their courage by honoring and supporting them. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the city of Norman as a Purple Heart city. Smash Chief Vance Skiver here, or somebody from Purple Heart Award? He didn't come. I'll get it to him. We would normally award that. He would come up and we'd give it over to him, and we've been awarded that as a, I don't know what city we are and what number city we are in the state of Oklahoma, but he's on a cause to get those done. So I'll save that for him for later. Item number three, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been acknowledged receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month in the city of Norman. Whereas mental health everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas 4.1% of adults in Oklahoma had serious thoughts of suicide in the past year, with 1 in 10 students reporting attempted suicide in the past 12 months. And whereas nearly 300,000 Oklahomans report having a substance abuse disorder, and whereas substance use disorder is not a moral issue but rather a chronic, treatable disease that individuals can recover from and go on to live healthy lives. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental illness, suicide prevention, and recovery from substance abuse disorder. And whereas the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believes that all Oklahomans deserve to have mental health and addiction services within reach without fear of judgment or shame through the evidence-based crisis response continuum, which meets people where they are and where they need it most. And whereas less than 1% of the 872 Oklahomans that died by suicide in 2022 were seen at a certified community behavioral health clinic, proving that connecting to evidence-based treatment services work and recovery-oriented care and recovery support systems help people with mental and substance abuse disorders manage their conditions successfully. And whereas OMDH SAS has provided more than 80,000 naloxone, Narcan kits to Oklahomans to prevent fatal overdoses resulting from opioid use, including Fentanyl, since January 2023. And whereas the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believes we should work together as a community towards zero suicides in the state of Oklahoma. And whereas the 988 mental health lifeline supports Oklahomans experiencing a mental health crisis, struggling with substance or having thoughts of suicide through trained medical health professionals via text or call, mobile crisis teams, urgent care, and crisis centers and follow-up appointments. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month in the city of Norman. Is JR here too? All right.
One, two, three. All right. Face cameras. One, two, three. Thank you so much. These are just little cards. It's for suicide prevention. And then everybody gets a sticker for being a good face.
All right.
At the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services.
We started providing 988 as a service July 2022, and that was out of an abundant need. Unfortunately, even before COVID, suicide in Oklahoma has been at an all-time high and just continues to climb, and so if we're not talking about it, it's hard to be about it. And so this is the first year that students in Oklahoma, as required by the legislature, will see 988 appear on their school ID badges. It's very important to have those conversations with kids and parents so they understand that that resource is there for them as attempted suicides are at an all-time high. Another demographic that, you know, we're very concerned about, white men, middle-aged men die by suicide the most because they have a hard time talking about their feelings in Oklahoma, so we like to say that talk saves lives and tomorrow needs you. Elderly populations also need to be reached out to in a huge way as they are the second largest demographic, and oftentimes their symptoms look a lot like health-related issues. And so we have to start having real conversations with our neighbors. It's all of our jobs, not just the department, but in the community, to say, how are you doing? Can I help you? This month, we're performing mental health first aid training so people can sign up to understand what those signs look like. If you're not able to attend, you can follow on social media, and they provide tips every day just on how to check in. 988 got 40,000 calls in its first year when no one knew about it, and 10,000 text messages. And so whether it's kids reaching out through text or other groups who don't know how to start that conversation, you are connected with a trained behavioral health expert. It's not just anyone. What we did differently in Oklahoma is 988 is actually in Oklahoma City, so where everything else is a national call center, ours is right here. It's Oklahomans helping Oklahomans because they know what treatment facilities are nearby, either for substance use or for mental health. And so with 300,000 Oklahomans just reporting substance use, and then 1 in 5 reporting mental illness, it's right here in this room, and whether we're talking about it or not means that if we're not having those conversations, we're going to have worse outcomes. So I just ask that all of you, check in on your family, check in on those that you care about, because that's how we make a difference.
Hey, guys. I'm JR. I'm Director of Compliance and Development at Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center. I'm also the Program Director for Hub 107, which is our peer-led drop-in center that functions as an intensive outreach program. I'm very excited to accept this on behalf of all of our staff. At all three facilities, we have Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center, Griffin Memorial Hospital, and Children's Recovery Center. We couldn't do the work that we do without your guys' support, and we take that support and that strength and funnel it back into the very things we do. And so we're really excited to accept this. I have three things that I have to say at everything that I do, right? So caller text 988, naloxone saves lives. If you need naloxone, stop by our pharmacy at the Mental Health Center on Alameda. We'll give it to you. Anyone can get it anytime that we're open for free, and we're getting fentanyl test strips soon, should hopefully have them very soon. And of course, you're not alone, so definitely come by, see us. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, as National Voter Registration Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, as National Voter Registration Day in the city of Norman. Whereas founded in 2012, the National Voter Registration Day is designed to create an annual moment when the entire nation focuses on registering Americans to exercise their most basic right, the right to vote. And whereas nearly 4.7 million have registered to vote on the holiday since inaugural National Voter Registration Day in 2012. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is a day of civic unity, it is an opportunity to set aside differences, enjoy the rights and opportunities we all share as Americans, and celebrate our democracy. And whereas on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, Americans will celebrate National Voter Registration Day with a massive cross-country effort to register voters. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, as National Voter Registration Day in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating by registering to vote and encouraging fellow citizens to exercise this valued civic liberty. Mary Francis, would you join me in the front, please?
Would the folks who are going to join me also join with me? The last time we did this, I invited several people to join me, and it was pretty welcomed by the audience, too, so.
I don't want you to stand up there all alone.
Several of my people are still, like, COVID voluntary, and others are also have COVID. That's not a good plan.
Here we go. All right, one, two, three, got it.
Yes, apparently my friend who got a housekeeping business is not going to be able to make it, however.
I might mention some things that were not mentioned in the proclamation, and that is that September 26th is the date when the state of Oklahoma in 1920 ratified the women's right to vote and joined the other 33 that finished creating the women's, well, they didn't create it, they ratified it, the women's right to vote. We always had the right to vote, but it wasn't noticed by the United States of America. And also, I might mention that there will be an event on the 26th, which is a Saturday, September 26th, in Oklahoma City for this event. And I think I misspoke. It was February 28th, 2020, yeah, 1920, when Oklahoma ratified that right to vote. And what we did last time, the League of Women Voters got a proclamation, was I asked several people to come stand with me and say their name and their occupation in a simple sentence. And I am Mary Francis. My occupation was a reading specialist and an activist, and I I am so sorry that my other people were not able to make it. They, as I explained to the mayor, several of them are at the polls, still working, and several others have COVID. Thank you, Mayor. It's a great pleasure to receive this proclamation, and the League of Women Voters thanks you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, now time for council announcements, and I'll start with Councilmember Peacock.
I'm prepared this time. So Saturday, September 23rd, is the Max Westheimer Aviation Festival from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Go out, enjoy the Westheimer Airport. There's something for everybody that day, including an open house, static aircraft displays, food trucks, and much more. There's going to be a children's area, and this is a really great time. I've been in years past, and you get to see some really cool aircraft up close and personal. And then on Friday, September 15th, this Friday, a national initiative is called Parking Day. Parking Day is a global, public participatory project where people across the world temporarily repurpose curbside parking spaces and convert them into public parks and social spaces to advocate for safer, greener, and more equitable streets for people. So I know that there's some ideas being planned for Norman and Oklahoma City, so stay tuned to social media and check those out whenever they come out, and make sure you do what you can to support Parking Day. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I would just encourage everybody, you still have nine more minutes to go vote if you haven't yet. Go ahead and exercise that right and let your voice be heard, because if you don't make a decision, others will decide for you. Also want to encourage everybody to, if you have the opportunity to watch our study session, City Council Study Session from August 29th on the City of Norman YouTube channel, we had about a two-hour-long discussion with Norman Police Department Chief Foster about the issues going on in Norman and what the police department is currently doing, what they plan to do in the future. We had a really good discussion about just a lot of different data points and a lot of the comments that we've all heard. We made sure to ask a lot of questions specifically on the record to the chief, so I would definitely encourage you all to go back on the City of Norman YouTube channel and watch that meeting from August 29th if you have an opportunity. Also would encourage you to tune in to the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting this month on the 28th at 4:00 p.m. here at City Hall. You're welcome to attend in person or watch live on the YouTube channel, but we will be getting an update and having a discussion with city staff about the upcoming changes to our public transit system and the new routes that we'll be rolling out on October 16th, along with the opening of our new central transit hub in downtown Norman. So tune into that meeting if you are someone that rides the fixed route bus system and you're concerned or wondering if the route changes might impact you. Please tune in, and we'll be discussing each route in detail. And please feel welcome to email or call any of us if you'd like us to address any specific concerns or questions that you have about that. And so again, that's on the 28th at 4:00 p.m. And then wanted to note, went to Art Walk this past Friday. It was wonderful. It was very packed. I think September is one of the busiest, September and October are the two busiest art walks every year, and it was really wall-to-wall people. I was told by the Norman Arts Council that they had over 40 street booths, which was the most they'd ever had at Art Walk in all the, more than a decade that it's been going on, so that was very impressive. It looked like everybody was having a really wonderful time. And want to thank everybody that is involved with putting that event on every month here in Norman. And then a couple of events going on this week. Tomorrow is an opening of our solid waste, new solid waste facility on Goddard Avenue at 4:00 p.m. It's ribbon cutting. And then I'll let Councilmember Schuler talk about the Virtue Center, but Griffin Park on Saturday at 9:30 a.m. will be a ribbon cutting for the opening of the new soccer complex, voter-approved Norman Forward Project. So encourage you all to get out and attend that if you don't have anything going on Saturday morning, and that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you. There's no announcements for this week?
Good evening, Ward Four in Norman. I had a great Art Walk as well last Friday, and I hope those that were in the bustling crowd did as well. Also, September is National Hispanic Heritage Month. We have several events happening, and one worth noting is the opening reception for Waking Up by Maria Christina Mercado and Cuzival. That happens this week, Thursday, September 14th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at Firehouse Art Center. I will have to miss it, but authentic Mexican food will be provided by Peppe Delgado's. The exhibition runs until November 4th, so if you miss it on Thursday, you have quite a while to catch it. Additionally, I've gotten calls about this, changes to occur at Always Stop Control at Acres Street and Jones Avenue. Yes, there was a stop sign removed, or two. That happened today, and this was brought on by an intersection evaluation brought on by multiple citizen concerns. It was determined that the location of the intersection is too close to the at-grid crossing, and it was leading to backed-up traffic. All of that will be marked with flags. The Always Stop signs removed and replaced with cross-traffic does-not-stop plates. If you have questions, you can call Public Works at 405-366-5453. And last, we've been talking about Civic IQ, and I did share that in Ward Four forums, but if you go to normanok.gov, navigate to the city manager page, scroll to the bottom, and sign up for the weekly reports he releases, you too can be informed. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward Three. I just have a few calendar reminders and thank yous. So I guess you have about four minutes left to vote, so please get out and exercise your right to vote. The residential fall cleanup for Ward Three is quickly approaching. If your Polycart service is on Monday, that is going to be September 30th, and if your Polycart service is on Tuesday, that will be October 7th. And then on October 10th, we will get to vote on replacing and rehabilitating 10 bridges, so please make note of the following dates. September 15th is voter registration deadline. That is three days away. September 25th is the absentee ballot deadline. October 5th and October 6th are the early voting dates, and October 10th is election day. And I thank you to Chief Foster for your presentation regarding the update in our crime activity and statistics on August 29th, and like Councilmember Holman said, if you missed it, you can watch it on our YouTube channel. It was very informative. And thank you also to Gary Schmidt, the PD's database manager. And thank you also to Gary Schmidt, the PD's Database Manager, for his hard work and his work on his analysis and the presentation. So lastly, those of you here with us and watching online, thank you for being here.
Councilmember.
Yes, so just wanted to make note of National Voter Registration Day, which is next week. If you haven't been aware, Oklahoma now has online voter registration, so it passed probably five years ago, and they've been working this whole time to actually implement that process online, so I think it launched just last month, which is super exciting, so it's even easier than ever to actually register. I will make one caveat to that, that you have to have an Oklahoma State license or a state-issued ID to be able to go through the online portal, so anybody else that doesn't have one of those two items will still need to do the paper form and ballot, sorry, just the form. And you can do that online at the address of okvoterportal-okelections.us, that is also the location where you can update your voter registration, so if you have moved, you know, in the last several weeks, or months, or in the year, and you need to update your registration, you can do that there. You can also request your absentee ballots on the voter portal as well. It's a really great system that kind of houses all of your election information. Then other councilmembers have talked about it being Election Day, just wanted to make note that our Oversight Committee, that typically meets on the second Tuesday of each month, that 4:00 p.m. is canceled for this month, so that would have been this Thursday. And then finally, thank you Councilmember Holman for letting me make the announcement about the Virtue Center. The Virtue Center is having their grand opening of their new building this Thursday, September 14th. They're gonna start allowing people from the public to come at 9:30 a.m., and then there will be a ribbon cutting at 10 a.m. So if you're looking to go see the new building, that took multiple years of a Capitol campaign to bring a nice space of hope and healing for our community and people that are dealing with mental health and addiction, the location of that is 2457 Wilcox Drive, so it's right behind the Brahms on 24th Avenue Southeast. So those are all the announcements.
Councilmember Ball.
All right, going last makes it easy. I think everything pretty much guys said. The only thing I have is I want to say thank you to Sheriff Amison and the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department for stepping up and helping us ensure that all of our schools have an officer in them. I have received numerous phone calls and emails from teachers, parents, and it's, they like it. So, I mean, I have kids at school too, so I love knowing that we have a sheriff there or an officer there to look out for their safety. And let's also keep them in our prayers, as most of you know, they did lose an officer or a deputy two weeks ago, so still dealing with that, so our thoughts and prayers are with you guys, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mayor has nothing. Next item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all councilmembers, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Items 5 through 41 be placed on the Consent Docket. Councilmember Schuler, you had a question on Item 41, is that correct?
Sure. Yeah. Mr. Olson.
Want the motion, okay. I need a motion, place Items 5 through 41 on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Motion's second. Motion on the floor is to place Items 5 through 41 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items 5 through 41 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Awesome. So this is in relation to Item Number 41, we had some questions and concerns from some members of the public around what this money, why we were, and moving this money into a different account for mold remediation and reconstructions of Fire Stations 3 and 7, so this money was in the Mattoon Property Cleanup Project, so just asked Mr. Olson to give some clarity on the Stormwater Park that we had appropriated money to, and kind of give indication of this money, how those things are separate, and kind of the timeline on the Stormwater Park and how that's moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Jason Olson, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, we'll just throw that in there, it's not technically on my title, but that division does fall in our department. So just to be clear, that we are, this request is for the Mattoon Property Cleanup Funding, which is, we set aside money, I believe it's a little bit over two years ago, just for the cleaning of that property, and that was just to come in there, and there was a lot of debris and different kind of things that was out there, so that cleanup was separate, a separate request from what was approved through your FYE 23 budget, which was for a nature/stormwater park, and that's a $1.5 million request. So this is taking an older fund, taking those funds to pay for a mold remediation, we did find that we had mold at Fire Station 3 and 7, that work is surprisingly already been completed, we considered that an emergency, so we just need to make sure we have funding to pay off the contractor of that. And to go a little bit farther in depth, the money is separate, so this is just old money that was for cleanup that we did not use, we had a lot of savings in that account. The million and a half is for the nature, Stormwater Park is in process. We have already have a contract with a designer, we are in a, basically Task 4 of, I'm looking at about 12 tasks to, for the Norman Nature Park, and that's a million and a half dollar budget, and right now we're in the middle of the biggest part of the budget, which is getting our permits and surveying and hydraulic modeling of that park, which is quite expensive.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate an update on the park, because we, yeah, budgeted that in last fiscal year, and, you know, wondering where that goes, and just to give, I guess, the public an understanding of when we appropriate money, sometimes it does take quite a long time to get all of those, I guess, 12 tasks that you've identified, to bring some things forward. So I'm glad to see that it's still, you know, a priority and that we're still moving forward on the.
It's a very big priority, the Parks Department's busy with Norman Ford stuff, we're fitting that in the schedule, we're about halfway done, and we're about ready to start public engagement for the nature park here really soon.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Holman, did you have a question?
Yeah, Jason. And for Sean, I have Items 12 through 19, and then 39 and 40. But for Jason, Item Number 22, if you would, just a quick overview of the Reeves Park, what we're doing there.
So this is just a quick cleanup item, to make sure that we have our as-built designs, so that we have those just to reference to in the future. Usually that comes in towards the end of the project, everything that they built while they're on-site, the contractor takes liberties to build some stuff, so we pay the architect to come in there and put those all in drawings and hand them to us, and that's usually a part of the project, for some reason that wasn't included in their initial architectural design project, or contract, so we just added that in to clean up that site.
And for those curious, we do have future plans for Reeves Park.
Of course, yes, there's a lot more, a lot more stuff to do out there. All of our infrastructure is done, we're ready to build more ballfields and all that good stuff here in the future.
Thank you. Then Items 12 through 19 are all regarding the Jenkins Widening Project, a voter-approved bond project, and I just wanted to clarify if this action was the last needed, at least on that side of the street, to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, appreciate that question, Councilmember Holman. Actually, Item 5 is also in that package, I think there are maybe eight or nine different easements, if I'm counting right. So this will complete the acquisition of roadway easements for the Jenkins Avenue Bond Project, which was part of our 2019 bond program, for all of the residential properties, these tend to be, I guess they all are on the east side of the road. You might recall that council had to go to the stage of filing eminent domain on all these properties, so the good news is, we are not having to use that tool, we were able to, after the filing of the eminent domain action, unfortunately, it takes that filing sometimes to get folks to the table, but after that was filed by council, we were able to negotiate volunteer acquisitions, in some cases donations, by these property owners, so we appreciate that very much.
Okay, so all that would be left is the other side of the street.
We have one more property owner, we're still negotiating with, the University of Oklahoma is giving us a hard bargain, but we're still working at it, and we do have, we were able to negotiate a right-of-access with them, so we are now able to give access to the additional space that we do not own for use by utility companies, that was a key element, we had to get ONG, and I think OG&E, and some of the other major utility companies in there to begin that relocation process this fall, in advance of the final design and bidding next year for the road project, so appreciate that. That is only a right-of-access, that is not the permanent right-of-way that we need, but I think we're very close, and our council, Catherine Walker, is working closely with their council to develop that final MOU.
And if fall goes smoothly, you think that project could be finished by the second year of football in the S.
Well, we're very mindful of the football season, certainly, and actually the school season as well. Right now, we are on track for a, if all of these things fall in place, certainly the right-of-way from the university is the key missing piece now, but if all that comes together, we can see this project bidding as early as summer of next year, so summer of '24. Very, again, very mindful of what happens in August through December in that corridor, but able to work around that and get a lot done in '24, and particularly after the football season in '24 and '25, finishing the project in '25.
Okay, and just for anybody curious, that project is from Lindsay Street South, basically to Lloyd Noble Center, Imhoff Constitution area. And then Items 39 and 40 regarding Lindsay Street Bond Project, the word widening got everyone's attention, I did receive a call from someone at OU yesterday, asking for clarification about that. I recall in the 2019 bond, that that being a special planning corridor, and it is a very sensitive area between Pickard and Elm Street specifically, but really the whole thing, with fully mature trees, older homes that are close to the street, and then our most heavily, you know, pedestrian area in the city between Elm Street and Jenkins, so could you maybe go into a little bit of summary about that?
Sure, happy to, and your recollection is perfect, these are both voter-approved projects, and I might mention, on your agenda, there are actually, I think, 10 or 11 what we call programming resolutions, that's what these are, Items 39 and 40 are programming resolutions. What that means is that before we can apply, before the city can apply for federal transportation funds, council has to approve a programming resolution. You will do 10 of those, 10 or 11 of those tonight, up to tonight, you've done another, I know we're submitting 27 grant applications in the next 30 days, so you will have done 27 programming resolutions, which essentially says that the council supports these projects, and you support the match, the financial match, and any other, if you will, red tape that we have to go through to get that federal funding. These two that you mentioned, 39 and 40, are two voter-approved projects in the 2019 bond program for, it does say widening, and I appreciate the concern about that, widening of Lindsay Street from Pickard to Jenkins, we actually have it divided up into two pieces, Pickard to Elm and Elm to Jenkins, that was specifically done that way in the election in 2019. The widening refers only to key intersections where there are no left-turn lanes, so Pickard would be a good example, where we have lots of traffic concerns, because you can't get that left-turning car out of the way of the through traffic, so the widening will only occur at key intersections, particularly those key intersections west of Elm. This project, or these two projects, particularly the one from Pickard to Elm, is also a major, major stormwater improvement. The area of Lindsay and Elm is our probably second or third worst flooding location in Norman, so that project is heavily based in flood control and stormwater enhancements. And then that portion that we know is very sensitive between Jenkins and Elm, lots of tremendous pedestrian activity with our students at OU, there will be no widening in that section, that was designed, as you say, the term was "special corridor," we meant that very seriously, that that was a very special corridor, no widening, no land acquisition, no changes to the campus in any way, but we did have lots of calls back prior to the election for better bike lanes, maybe some bus activity if that were in the future plans for the transit system, easier crossings of the pedestrians, maybe more landscaping, that sort of thing, so that's really what that project is about, is about flood control and, I guess, multimodal transportation, bike lanes, and more pedestrian opportunities.
I appreciate that, that is definitely my recollection of the project as well, and if I also recall the West-Lindsay Project to I-35, the section between Berry Road and Pickard was intentionally not widened in its two lanes to ensure and give comfort to residents that the piece of Lindsay leading up to campus was not gonna be four lanes, and cutting down all the trees and bulldozing all the houses.
Thank you, that's exactly right.
But yeah, that was my recollection, is where possible adding left-turn lanes and bike lanes, new sidewalks, streetlights, stuff like that, so really an enhancement project, more than adding more capacity for cars.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mr. O'Leary, just one quick note for the record, the Jenkins Widening Project does include the undergrounding of the overhead lines on the east side, and I know that was one of council's top priorities, to be able to clean up that line of site and provide for some new landscaping, so it took an awful lot of work on the part of the Public Works crew to bring that into the project and get all the cooperation necessary, there were several utilities on those poles, although they didn't look that heavily trafficked, substantial amount of coordination by Public Works, so thank you, I just wanted everybody to know, it'll be beautifully clean and nothing above ground down Jenkins.
I definitely appreciate that, and think a widening project is a perfect opportunity to do that very thing, so we're tearing it up already, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council regarding Items 5 through 41? All right. The motion on the floor is to place Items 5 through 41 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve Items 5 through 41 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket. Oh, nevermind, I had it behind myself, sorry. I guess now we're down to miscellaneous comments, this is out of step already, I'm waiting to do more business. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
We do, we'll start with Gertrude Gonzalez. Okay, moving on to Diana Hutzel.
Diana Hutzel, Ward 5, I too wanted to take an opportunity to thank Councilman Holman for asking for the chief and the Norman Police Department to provide the update, it was very informative during city council study session. I recognize the time and effort that it took to put that together, having done some of that in a past life. I appreciate the information provided, the validation of the data that I had previously provided to council, and then also the validation of public concerns. I'd also like to request that the charts and any handouts provided to council during that meeting, if those could be uploaded to the city website to make that available to the public, that'd be great, I think people would appreciate that. Several councilmembers requested additional data from Chief Foster during the meeting, and a couple of those were the comparison of Norman crime with other Southeastern Conference college towns, a comparison of current downtown Norman crime data versus pre-COVID numbers, and a comparison of calls for service between the current overnight shelter, the prior shelter on Comanche, and the shelter before that in the old library building. And I recognize the magnitude of what those additional requests are gonna present to the police department, so I am on top of their regular workload, so I send good thoughts to them and hope that that goes swimmingly fast for them, because I know that that's a lot of extra work. I'd also like to request, too, if any additional data is provided to council, that that also be uploaded to the people, for the citizens to look at. And then lastly, I just want to address one comment made during the study session about calls into 911, about the unhoused, and it was mentioned there's a possibility the high numbers might be due to people. And it was mentioned there's a possibility the high numbers might be due to people calling in just to ramp up the numbers or to possibly skew the numbers. And I just wanted to say that I personally don't find that very plausible, because hopefully people recognize, and if they don't, they should be listening now, that false reporting is in and of itself a criminal misdemeanor, which is 90 days in county jail and up to a $500 fine. And if it involves a missing child, it's a year in county and a $1,000 fine. And so I frankly just don't, I don't understand people who might be doing that if they're doing that. But if they are, then they deserve to do the time and pay the price for that, and I think they'll also have to do some service time to the police department for the mess and the extra work that they cause to do that. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Luigi Pulvani?
I just wanted to speak about the mayor presenting the billion-dollar project within Norman behind closed door. He, to me, felt like he's not there to represent.
Sir, you're to address council as a whole, not one person.
Presenting the project behind closed door was a failure at representing everyone in Norman, but who can afford to take a morning off and pay for a pricey business breakfast. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, this person has signed up since they got here, so I just want to make sure. Cheryl Ann Dinsa?
Good evening, council and citizens of Norman. I want to just comment on some of the misinformation that I've seen spread around town about different folks. And I want people to understand that it doesn't do any good to spread vitriol, and that's not what Norman neighbors or Norman neighbors 1889 are trying to do. So those folks that think that that's happening, it's not. I also want to say that there are, there is some miscommunication within the meetings going around town. And I, for one, don't like to see that kind of stuff happening within our city. I think people need to be truthful, and they need to be honest and open in their dealings. And I'm going to be watching, and hopefully people will pay attention to what's being said from the citizens in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mary Frances? Okay. Evan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone watching at home. Okay, so I've got so much to say in such a small amount of time to do it in. You know, electricity and energy is important to me. I see it as being one of the foundational elements of society, of civilization. And if we could put, if we could enforce a mandate by which the circuits to people's homes could be cut off, so that all of the devices, which all have some electricity draw, everything, if it has prongs, it's drawing a micro amount of electricity. Whenever you were leaving, if you could flip a switch inside and then flip a switch on the outside, so that there would be some type of a break, some type of a, you know, an efficient way for you to easily save that money, I think that that would be something worth putting in a code. That's that. I do have an announcement. I'm going to start teaching these posture classes and these youth runs classes at my home, 1400 Garfield Avenue, on Sundays at noon. Everyone here, everyone watching, is invited, okay? This is the most foundational aspect of life. It's like electricity. It's like this synergistic potential that we all possess, but you have to structure your body, you have to breathe in a specific way to level up in your health, level up in how you approach the challenges of life. And posture is that. Permaculture is that. Okay. I've only got one minute left. This is silly. I meant to say this a couple times ago. Sleep, right? Very important. One-third of our lives. This is, we all know you shouldn't drink caffeine, you shouldn't work out too late at night, you shouldn't, you know, if you're having trouble trying to fall asleep, you should get up and you should read something. We all know those kind of hacks. Here's another one. If you want to sensitize yourself to the comfort of your bed, lay on the floor, lay on a hard surface for two or three minutes, and then get in your bed. That contrast will be worth it. Mr. Mayor, the speech, it was wonderful. I loved the pitch. I loved the vision.
You're not addressing all of us.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for the compliment.
I'm glad that City Council was there, because it's so important. But there are a few things missing. There's a few tweaks that we can put to it, but we'll do that.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
Carlinda Gravel?
Carlinda Gravel, Ward 4. Mayor, council. I want to take a moment to thank those of you that pay attention whenever we're giving our comments. This is very time-consuming in my life. This is not something I like doing. This is something I feel like I need to do. So those of you that are being attentive to those who are in your ward, I want to let you know how much I appreciate that, and we as a city notice that. So thank you. Secondly, I'd like to point out something in regards to the August 29, 2023 call as well, the interview with Chief Foster. There was some information shared, very important information there, that was also very validating for what we're seeing as a community. There was a comment made about, yay, Ward 6, I wish that Ward 4 could be so lucky. So we, as a city of Norman, I realize that you each have your wards that you represent, but I hope that you consider the entire city of Norman your city as well, and not just your ward that you're representing. Secondly, when we discuss the number of calls in regards to the homeless population, 2,736 calls, if the PIT count is in fact accurate, we're talking about a population of 213 people in regards to those 2,736 calls. Secondly, I'd like to point out that the combination of somebody who calls, as well as officer, police officers who show up and identify the person as homeless, is what makes up the number of that actual number. So, for example, when I have to call, I'm not sure if it's a homeless individual or not always. So I make sure and leave that up to the police officer. Let me point out what happens when we call 911. It's not fun, and it's not a game. First of all, the time I had to call and I had to wait for an officer because I had to sign a third-party consent docket for an individual exposing himself to children on Main Street, it took so long that by the time I got to finish walking home, my dog had overheated and she was sick for two days. Secondly, when we call 911, they ask, they can ping where we are within 30 feet. They know where our cell phone is. They know where I are in relation to the nearest cell phone tower. They ask for our name, they ask for our address, and they ask where we are. They now know that our phone number is associated with us if we have to call again. So a lot of us in Ward 4 have had to call again, unfortunately. So as far as people being held accountable for falsely calling 911, this is something that I was explained to today, and I've also got clarification, as I'm part of the Citizens Academy, which has been extremely beneficial, is that 911 calls, the vast majority are not actively harassing or misusing 911. This isn't a game when you call 911. This is tying up an emergency response phone number that is very, very critical to many lives in this city that have to call 911 for those emergency situations that may be life or death.
All right. Thank you all for being here. We are adjourned. Yay.